Well, um, yeah. We all got emailed the proposal that they had a couple of weeks ago. And we asked everyone to just take a peek at it. Steve went through, or I should say Mr. Lieber went through and identified with Unitil all the streetlights that are in town. There was an issue with, Steve recommended from Bright, 22 of them didn't have arms, so that would have to be separate. So for all the streetlights, 34 of them are basically a yard light. And Unitil won't allow them to place those. They need to have an arm extended out over the road. And Affinity's not able to do that. Unitil does it themselves because it's up on the poll with the high levels. Or they contract out the right people for it. So there's a separate cost for those 34 arms. And that cost was, Steve, you wanna? Stay. What they're offering is, so that was a separate charge for that. It was $22,000 for that. We're $35,000 a year in the budget for to maintain those lights and the cost of the electricity. So Unitil is offering a program, and Steve will explain a little bit more, but they'll go and change the lights they can, and then Unitil will put those brackets on and put the other lights on. And all that is going to be covered. What will happen is, Unitil will consider it a loan, and zero interest, and pay it out over five years. The cost of it, for all of it, for Affinity's work and everything else, who've done it over five years, at zero percent interest. And then, so what they're gonna do is, the second Affinity does that, there's gonna be a savings right off the bat on the electricity. So that money they're gonna save is gonna finance, basically, the cost of what Affinity's doing and Unitil's doing.
So for five years, the cost would be the 35 per year?
Pretty much, right, Steve?
For a year, we'll actually see the $8,900 in savings per year.
Which I think is actually a significant savings when it comes down to it. And to be honest, if we had to do this on our own, it's a substantial cost, you just saw. But Unitil, and that changed, they only realized that a couple of years ago, working with Affinity, that it's in their best interest to help the community. So this is a way we can get it done and finance free.
I totally agree with that. I'd say they switched LED at the library, and it really was a big savings. In turn, the light.
Yeah, well, you see, the $8,900 a year, we're gonna be saving.
Thank you very much.
Does anybody have any questions? Uh, what kind of lifespan are we looking at in these? I mean, what is, what is the anticipated? Where were the? Any other questions?
I had a question from a member of the public here. Alan wants to know if all 108 lights have been confirmed to belong to the town of Kingston. Some of the lights along Route 125 have been put up and responsible to individual business owners. No? No.
Um, the que- Chief, or go ahead, yep. What I was gonna say is, I mean, the short answer to that, we're gonna find out exactly what we own, because if someone's calling asking about lights on 125, these weren't paid for anyway. So if they're not ours, we'll make sure that we double check it. We'll wanna do it here, I think it's a good enough deal. But I think the streetlights that are out there are kinda mismatched different places. You know, at some point, we gotta evaluate, do we wanna add more? But I don't think we wanna do it, I don't know if we wanna do it now. Like, for instance, the fire department's gonna be moving three poles. If we wanna add some there, while the Unitil's gonna be there at the very least, or even put lights up on the roof that can check out. But there is a light ordinance on the lanes too, I don't know what we wanna do.
I like the idea of reviewing, after they've done the assessment of the town, for us to sit down and look at where there might be some needs. And that would be a great opportunity to let the townspeople know that we're reviewing the lighting in town. Examine that there will be some neighborhoods where individuals might think they really need a light, or don't need a light, or the direction, at least give them a chance to implant.
Just don't ask Dawn, he'll say yes every time.
No lights to speak of, but I, I'm not proposing that we put lights in every street by any stretch of the imagination, but I'm saying is, there may, we can invite public comment to what we propose to do, or we are looking at adding on, or minimizing.
Survey, you can do a survey of the town and come back with, that survey's not gonna cost us anything per se, right? $22,000 for arms, that's $650 bucks an arm. So any streetlight we add, and we already set the budget, and it's gonna be a tight year as it is, so I don't know what we wanna do, how much input we wanna take versus pull off the project. I agree, I know some people have some input. I would take a second to mention, um, Gutsy, because a lot of the reason those yard lights are up is because he got those on his own, and no cost to the town to put them up, back when he worked for Unitil. So that was a savings that the town realized for a while, and that was good.
And I'm not looking to open up a can of worms, I'm just saying that there may be some areas where that may be necessary to add some lights. I would, I would assume that the police and the fire would have a better idea of some concerns of areas and towns that might need better lighting. I'm not looking really to wholesale light up the town, that's not my intent.
That's true. The reason why we have a lot of lighting on 125, we reduce the accident rate by about 70%.
There you go.
At the intersections. Well, over the years, I've had lights moved to different locations, different intersections based upon the number of accidents, the amount of crime that you may have there. So we look at all of those factors, and we all take a look at them. That's why you have, like in front of the Palmwood Restaurant, they come down over the hill, we used to have three or four accidents a week there. Not gonna move, we haven't had accidents in front of the Palmwood Restaurant in 10 years. The same on Route 125, all of those intersections, we've not looked at. We just recently entered into an agreement with the state, it was last year, where we took over ownership of some of those lights, based upon the fact that the state is pulling out their, their portion of what was paid out from all intersections on 125. So we were dealing with that, that was last year, they, they talked about it.
And which might be weighing in on that as well, as well from the highway department? I mean, you, you, that's, those three departments would be the ones that, that really would have the biggest say, in my opinion, but it just, I just wanted people out there to be aware that we're looking to do this, we're gonna have a plan, and some specific concerns we need to hear about.
I'm gonna hope that he's gonna reach out to the police and fire, because my only concern is, is kinda no rhyme or reason to lay the lights out. It's kinda who we knew back then. We haven't addressed this issue for a long time, but there is no rhyme or reason to lay the lights out. I think, I think a survey would be really helpful. Who doing that? Grim, did you have a question?
Uh, no, who's answering?
Okay. For our record two, for our arm. The only thing I'd say is, um, you saw the proposal to make sense, they've already put a lot of work in it. And I didn't follow up with everyone but the town of Exeter, I did follow up with their staff. And I worked there and the lighting difference, you can see it, is completely different than it ever is. It's all consistent, it's incredible. And I, I would ask anyone to take a look at any of the towns we mentioned, whether it's Blockdale or Fort Smith, any of them. But I, I did follow up with Exeter, Exeter can't say nothing good about that.
And the savings were aligned with what they had anticipated?
Yep.
You have it? Kevin has it.
We can pass it.
All right, any other questions? Entertainer motion.
I would like to make a motion that we contract with Affinity to stop the fair and convert our streetlights. To Elliot.
Second.
And have, I'm sorry, have the chair sign on this, sir, dogs.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Susan, roll call vote please.
Um, Slakman Alessio.
Yes.
Slakman Coombs.
Yes.
Slakman St. James.
Yes.
Slakman Briggs.
Yes.
Slakman Wilson.
Yes.
Motion carries, unanimous. Someday soon, hopefully. All right, uh, our next scheduled appointment is the fire station building committee. To discuss the pre-construction budget and utility pole estimates not regarding lighting.
We also have, uh, Ken Walker and Chuck Hart joining us.
Uh, should say it's Chief Grant Ellery and Mark Furlong here in person.
So I guess we could all just follow up on our, uh, our last meeting two weeks ago, there was a few questions that came up that we didn't have the answers to. And, um, first thing I wanted to mention was that the, um, the bond, the bond application is due on May eighth. And I believe that's the date. As far as I know, Cindy has everything that she needs to complete that. But you won't meet again until after that, so I don't know if you need to take some action tonight to authorize the chairman to sign that application.
I'm not sure we can do this with your sound.
Yeah, I think that, that mic has to go.
I think it's her volume.
Let's see, where are you? You're, you're muted, so I don't know what the problem is.
I think we're good. No.
See, I can get out.
Yeah, I think that. I was hearing that on those guys. All right.
So I don't, I don't know if you need to consider that, but we can come back to that.
Sorry, the reverb is.
You won't be meeting until two weeks from tonight, which I believe is May eleventh.
Eleven, eleven.
Yes, so that would be after the bond application is due. So you may want to consider taking action to authorize the chairman to sign that. Application.
I'll, I'll make a motion to authorize the fair to sign for bond before May eighth.
To sign the application for the, to go to the bond.
Yeah, before May eighth.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, motion and second. Uh, discussion.
I'll start, I think we, you know, we talked about it, um, we're borrowing for three million dollars, I believe. And the application got to get in, the window is for July, correct? There's only two times for your bond, July and June, so we don't want to miss that application. So that's all I would say.
You know, there is still some question as to whether the bond sale is going to go off as scheduled. But until we hear otherwise, I think we should just move forward.
We still need the application in no matter what in order to get the first cycle.
Exactly, and until, and until the municipal bond bank probably has all the applications, they're not going to really know how much of a bond sale they're even looking at doing. So information will be coming back from them as the process proceeds. There'll be an opportunity to, to pull it back if the situation is not, is not right financially. But we have to at least start by putting that application in.
You don't know if the, if the application is done yet, right?
I don't, but I don't know if Chuck, Chuck's been working on it.
Okay, okay.
Cindy's been working on the application, I know, um, along with Chuck.
Does user Charles Hart want to weigh in on that?
Is he muted?
He is.
I can't seem to unmute him.
Technology's amazing.
There's one here, I'm clicking on unmute, it's not.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, any further discussions? Again, I suggest for the application, this is not to accept the bond or anything like that, so.
To apply to the bond.
That's true.
Okay, hearing no further discussion, Susan, could you please call a roll call vote?
Alessio?
Yes.
Coombs?
Yes.
St. James?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
And Wilson.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, so, um, we'll follow up tomorrow to see where we are in that process, to make sure that we have everything we're open for that.
And then the other, the other question that came up two weeks ago is, you know, when, when will the bond funds be available? Um, the answer to that question is the middle of August. So we put together a list of the things that had already been previously identified. Our committee hasn't met, so we're just kind of pulling together information for things that have already been discussed in our meetings. And that list was provided to you showing some of the things we need to start working on between now and when those bond funds will be available. And we have two sources of, of funding for those things. Uh, one is the impact fees, and then the other is the, um, the balance in the capital reserve fund, uh, which we voted to use that along with the bond proceeds and the trust fund. So, um, I think what, what we've laid out is that the project can move forward with that funding that's, that's available. And, um, there are things such as starting to pay the architect once that contract gets approved. Um, there's a little bit of work for Bauen, the construction management firm. Their contract maturity approved had two pieces of funding to it. One was to take us to the vote, and then the second piece, which is what's listed here, is to take us from the vote to, to bidding. And then that's when their, um, their fee, which is a percentage, will kick in. Uh, and then some of the other things that need to be worked on are the site plan. Uh, this is anticipated that will need to be done at Four Rockerman before that, uh, building is demolished. Uh, the septic system, which was part of the land swap with 146 Main Street. And then some fire protection engineering to design the, um, the holding tank that will serve the new fire station initially and have the ability to serve more of the town buildings in the future. And then what else? Those are geo, geotech testing, so that we know, um, what kind of foundation needs to be built. And we put, we put a line item in there just for legal. We know there'll be some legal, like the contract for, for SMP is being reviewed by summer now. And then the big amount of the utility pole relocation, I know the chief has been working on that.
It's, that's been signed, and we have, we've talked to Warrior or Unitil. So there won't be a bill coming out for this until the end of that project. And this is just to tie us into this proposal. And so the final bill will come in the drop time. So this has been signed tonight, so that's ready to go.
Okay, but, uh, consolidated does require, I believe, uh,
Consolidated does, they'll come in, they'll come in after Unitil does their stuff. So actually, I'm going to take this and, and, uh, actually to Warrior tomorrow.
Is that for Unitil and consolidated?
No, this is three. Yeah, this one here just to suit Unitil.
All three were signed?
Yeah.
Yeah, all three are with you and all of you signed.
So it's going to start with Unitil first, and then consolidated will come at the end with, with Comcast.
Well, consolidated drops the polls, right?
I'm not sure if they're going to have a subbill or not. Patrick wasn't sure, I'm not sure if they're going to have a subbill or not.
One, one thing you may want to look at while he was talking about like fire protection quotes and, and that type of stuff, is right now on the current system for this building, the library or the museum, uh, the First Congregational Church is also on that. I don't know where you guys stand, if you want to talk to them, or if you just want to take them off, or whatever that may affect the price that we get.
That discussion needs to take place, we discussed it before, whether they're going to stay on the original system from the school and, and do something different. I mean, that discussion needs to be had because it's going to shut down, uh, the museum, it's going to shut down this building, uh, First Congregational Church, and a couple of fire plugs, I believe, right? So that, there needs to be a meeting on that, a discussion, that's probably something we should set up. I would recommend for the next meeting, probably at six o'clock with representative of the church.
Was there any memorandum of understanding or anything like that with them? Yeah, we should definitely get our hands on that first before we.
Yeah, I think, if I remember right, I think, I think the church paid so much to have it come into their building. I don't remember the amount, do you, Rich, remember?
The amount, yes, the church paid the school, they signed contracts. Matter of fact, the church has a home of the town and actually had a, under the school district.
So that was, do you remember the year, that was what, fifteen, twenty years ago?
Church, oh, yeah, sixteen years.
Yeah, those sprinklers were put in about twenty years ago.
Twenty.
So it was a year or two after that was operational.
So that, they had actually shut down the town hall for a while until they did something with the fire protection in this building that did recove. And they did these two buildings, a couple of fire plugs, the church.
If, since we won't be needing the fire suppression system that's there, that, that's, that's my understanding, is that correct? We won't need it as a town, correct, the church would still need it.
We're, we're going to need it here, we're still going to need it.
Not, not, you're talking about the cistern and the pump itself at, at the new Chinburg property? For the old high street.
We haven't finished the, the PNS on that yet, that's still in progress.
You're still going to need the three locations to have fire protection through, through water, water source. And it's just depends on what they're going to do over here, if that's going to be a standalone, I assume it is. So we're still going to need to be fed off that.
Okay.
So we're still going to need to talk to the school before they do the, the deal.
If I remember correctly, Mr. Chinburg was not, he did not really need the suppression system there. But I, it's, he's aware of our need for it, he is aware that we need it.
So I think we should probably meet with all parties and come into an agreement and some kind of legal documentation.
Correct.
To, I mean, who's going to maintain the pump, what's going to happen from there, all of that. Because as soon as that pump goes away, this building and the library and the church will get shut down if we don't maintain that, that system. So it's pretty important to give the building.
Also, I thought before, before the engineering work gets done.
That's right.
For the new system, we need to know which building has to be included.
Yeah, I thought we were going to set that system up to handle this and museum, and the question was whether or not the church wanted to add to it.
Right, is that correct?
Yes. It'll be the cost at the very least of a pipeline going from the fire station to that hydrant out here at the tap. Is that entirely in?
That, that cost.
It's not in this block.
Would it, in, in the, in the fire station project? Would it not be smart to keep both systems up and running, so if you lose one?
No. You're going to have a generator there and you're going to have the, the fire pump. So why would you, I, I, I think that's.
Redundancy.
We need an agreement with them to go until the fire system is hot and tied in, but after that, I think we need to, it's redundancy, there's none of the fires anymore.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, if I recall, the, the rationale was that was an old system that was on its last legs, and so we chose to put a whole new one in rather than rely on that. So, we need to get some people together here on this and.
Well, yeah, because the system's going to have to be designed based upon load.
Correct.
And so that's going to have a considerable amount of.
And we, we had some discussions in our committee as to whether the fire station or if the church was to be included would be, to create the highest hazard. We don't, we don't know the answer to that, the engineers have to determine that.
I mean, maybe, maybe you leave the church on the, on the old system. I mean, depending on the cost, so, I mean, you've already calculated. I mean, depending on the cost. So, I mean, you've already calculated the cost for that system in that building. And did you take into consideration for adding three additional buildings?
From what I understand, the rough estimate that was given was for all the build tying into the current system, meaning that the fire station, because of the garage, the Bay Area, is going to have the highest fire load. So, that's my understanding.
Well, I think we have to at least have something to present to the church so they can make up their mind whether they want to tie it with us or stick it to the school. That's their choice. And they're going to have to make it. We're going to have to figure out a cost of what it's going to cost if we are to provide the church. That's the only question. And it's up to them what they want to do.
But we also have to be prepared to give them some kind of ballpark price. I mean, when the church comes in, we got to say you're looking at a $20,000 fee or a $100,000 fee. So, the engineers are going to have to throw some kind of ballpark.
What's the, the church can make a decision? What's in the ground, Rich? Is that a plastic pipe? Is that steel?
Steel.
Steel. And what's the longevity of that steel pipe in the ground?
Actually, yes, it's not falling.
I'm sorry?
It's not falling. I think the last one, the issue...
Is that the same diameter the whole way through, or is it?
I believe it's six inches the whole way through.
That's a stuff ready, ready, ready.
Yes.
Does the school pay to maintain the current system? Who pays for the school?
The school pays for, the church pays a little bit to the school district. I believe it's the yearly maintenance. So, the school basically takes care of the system. That's the natural high school, right?
Yep.
It all means the town, the kids, and when we first bring this building, pay for the piping, pay for the sprinklers here, the sprinklers in the old library, the museum. And we bought into, I think, why it was, you know, $40,000, $60,000 on time payment. We don't contribute to the yearly maintenance for the system, system on your life form.
And to be honest with you, I don't remember ever seeing any dollar amount to the cost of maintaining that system. And when we were reviewing, the reason I'm saying that, because we had the two appraisals done within the last few years and a lot of trying to figure out what it is, what was costing the school district to maintain that property. And that cistern system did not...
It's been certified yearly, right?
Yeah, it's tested, they, 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 someone come in once a month, pass a brand new system.
They have water testing. I know they do the water testing, but again, I was just trying to...
Yeah, they just test the pump. I believe the school does it once a year. So, like, you haven't done, well, it's all the same system. So, they have a company come in, they test the pressures and all that stuff for the pump, make sure it's operating correctly. And so, that would have to be, if the church stays on that system, that would have to be, I would assume, a possible occurrence to do.
Cost to the church, right, right. Well, I can call up Tom, the superintendent of schools, and see what the deal is, what are they looking to do? And maybe you and I don't can work on that together and coordinate with the church and come back with a proposal at our next meeting.
So, it's a problem.
Have the church come here and talk to us or whatever. I'm not sure what needs to be done.
Well, I mean, I'm assuming any memorandum of understanding is between the school district and the church.
That is correct. That is correct. And we may need one intemperarily for ourselves until the fire station's built.
It's going to be normal under the ownership.
Right.
So, the old, the old system go away.
Right.
So, and you're going to need a price on what we're, obviously, we're probably going to feed these two buildings that belong to the town, I would assume. Is that what the plan is?
I didn't understand.
I assume we want to feed these buildings that belong to the town the same system that we own.
Yes, that was, that was the building committee. It's flat. We got to get out of the side and have the system take care of the country.
How about the two fire plugs? I know the one out front we picked up. But how about the one up the street? That fire plug?
Yes.
So, if we're going to be feeding that fire plug that goes by the church, I would guess it would make sense to try to pull the church with us. Is that correct?
I would imagine it would benefit the church to come in with the town.
Oh, we're going right by the front of the church because the fire plug is right out in front of the spot.
Oh, boy, let's count the money.
You can, you can, we can wire it up.
Exactly.
We can run this one. Just one hand. That's going to be the other. And then we put the pipe running in from the fire station to the town hall. We put another one on the way to the front. Sure, but we're not going to fire station. And honestly, we would put the engine system so we have one to continue the line down to the state park. You could tap on it, deep cost.
So, here's my question. Does, I mean, we're going to need some engineering for this. We can't just start throwing pipe into the ground, and we need elevations and all that stuff. So, has that been factored in to that cost, the engineering? I think we did a straight estimate on just the work, not the...
Right. What was in the project budget was the engineering work to design the system to support the new fire station and be able to support the other buildings in the future and to construct the system for the new fire station, but not tying in the buildings. So, that additional work would have to be, would have to be budgeted.
Okay, so, let me get this straight. In the meantime, we need to be able to have access to the water system under the school. So, that's really what we need, a bridge agreement. Am I correct in that?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. And I just want to be clear that I'm, this is a little bit out of my wheelhouse, so I want to be sure I have the right...
Well, what would change from what we're doing today?
That's a $64,000. Once that property no longer is owned by the school and we're half of the school, then we need to have clear access to that water until such time that we don't need it because of the new station. I don't see any problem or any difficulty with Mr. Chinburg in that respect. But that has to be in the PNS. That some kind of agreement that we continue to use the water system from the school until such time as we hook up with the new fire station. In the meantime, we still need to touch base with the church and praise them of the situation. And they'll have to make decisions. And then we're going to need some numbers to tell them what it's going to cost. Did I follow the logic clearly?
The only thing I asked that you double-checked on the engineering, because we added these buildings when we had that conversation. And the only question that left is how the pipe is going to go from here to there. There was talk of agreement. There's not an engineer that looked at the fire line in this building and the line and the church to figure out the additional loading that needs to be put at the new fire station. Has it happened yet?
All right. Well, that's part of our conversation.
Well, and that one's not the same. It's based on use. So...
The information all exists is SFC engineering designed this, designed that, and designed the church, I believe. I think it was SFC. The information all is, we've just got to put it together and see what size pipe we need to run from the new fire station this way and make sure that your size of the pump properly so that you can get proper water flow to all these other...
I understand that, but you don't think, or you're saying that it's not an estimate to have that pump big enough already to handle these buildings?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, that is my... But it's, it's an estimate that was created without the engineering work being done. So, it isn't, it isn't a full assessment.
Okay.
So, without hope, is at the very least, we've got to get in touch with Chinburg Property, see if we can cover ourselves.
We're going to cover the school because the school still owns the property. That's the first thing we'll do. I'll put Tommy on most of the morning and say, I know the PNS, it's not been finalized yet.
He's aware that we're interested in that.
Oh, absolutely. It's no surprise.
I had several conversations with him about that, fire pump feeding the buildings, and we need to do something.
There were two things we needed from the town ahead of time. This was one. And the conservation is easement on the main building. Those are the two things that we know about. There'll be other things, I'm sure, as he comes to us. He, being Chinburg, goes through all the permitting and impact, all that. He's going to want, he's going to want some deals.
Yeah.
So, also, one more bit prior, because it's only needs to change the next five years.
It may very well be, yes.
Do what he's proposed, he pointed it.
Correct.
That problem is not only needs to change again until after next five, nine, 10 years.
That's true. You're absolutely correct.
Until the town votes to change the settlement, which we may not know to do, I think it will. But until that happens, I don't think it'll be a sale. It'd be an asset sign now.
Correct. It won't be finalized.
It may be July, but really, looking probably, I don't think it's going to break around to the fire station until next June anyways, way things are going. So, we won't break around all the time that we're talking about the final purchase on the seven.
Right, right, you're right.
All right, I'm going to reel this back in here.
Yeah, that's true. We're getting on a field. We are, sorry.
Way out there. Hang on, let me just, so, the first thing we need to do, Dawn, I'm putting you down as the one who's going to be contacting the church to just have a preliminary meeting with them to just start this conversation. Ellie, you'll be contacting the school board or the superintendent to get this lined up. I will probably put it back on the fire station building committee to figure out the sizing of the pump. But we are going to have to have a separate engineering done for, I mean, that doesn't fall under the fire station. We're rerouting this whole thing, so that's going to have to come from building and grounds.
My...
From your budget getting up. So, we need to get that started. And, I mean, that's putting a piece of ductal iron pipe across a sandy field. So, it's not a huge thing, but it's going to need, you know, we're going to need some elevations and stuff like that. So, um... Do we want to just have Dennis's outfit start looking at that, or what are your thoughts?
My thought process is, um... The Nichols Building, I believe they did the church. I believe they did. But anyways, they can get the information and make sure, see what we need for GPM flow and pressure to satisfy these buildings so that the new system at the fire station is properly sized.
Okay, so, and Ellie, as the liaison, you'll just follow up and ensure that's happening?
Yes, no problem.
All right. So, that should at least get us started on that, so we can start getting some hard numbers together.
And the other, the other big question was, from two weeks ago, was when, when would money be needed from the trust based on what we're looking at, or between now and when the bond funds would arrive? We would use the bond fund first. So, we don't have the project schedule yet. That's something that's still being developed. But once we get that scheduled, we'll have a funding schedule as part of that. But we're probably looking at, you know, well into next year before money from the trust would be needed.
Okay. I have relayed that to him, but, so, Jewish?
We don't know yet. It really has to be put together. We haven't met, so it was a committee. We haven't really had our kickoff meeting with the architects and the rest of the design team. We're, we're probably going to plan that meeting fairly soon, I hope. And that's definitely one of the top things on the agenda, to get that schedule put together.
Okay. Kevin, what you got?
I was just going to go back to the sprinkle thing and see if we could charge the road agent or building maintenance guy and the chief to figure out what SFC, what is going to be the cost to put the church in here? I know we've got to run the pipe up anyways. What is the cost that we have something to give to the church? And that would be a determination on what the SFC is going to make about that. We need to be able to tell the church is what it's going to cost.
I can't see that there's, I mean, the piping is already here. We're just filling it from the other direction. That's all we're doing. Maybe a larger system, pumps, larger system.
Yeah, we've got to come up with a cost to give.
That's a big thing, yeah.
Making sure that people are aware that there is a change coming.
The engineering for that part of it was included in the project. It's the initial engineering to tie it together. It wasn't, but I think we could just get one proposal from SFC and talk it back to you.
I agree, but my point is, we're not in the business of providing a sprinkle system to a nonprofit. It's going to be, we've got to have a number to give them. So, it's including the cost, but what is that?
These are not ordinary circumstances. They're tied in, done, it collects the town. So, this is unusual.
Yeah.
We're not providing to nonprofits anything. So, in this, we're doing, we're being good neighbors because they've been in that system with us and then we're going to help them move along accordingly. That's what this is all about. So, it's not, it's not setting a precedent.
There's a cost of designing the system, and then there's a cost of building. Building it may or may not include the church, and that would be a fairly easy cost to, I think, to capture.
Correct. And we don't know what the church exactly is going to do or what their opportunity, what their options are. We don't know any of that yet. I guess I didn't want you to think that we're all of a sudden...
No, I want to be a good... Cost. I just want to know what that cost is. I think they're going to need to know that.
And that's, yes, we do need to know that. The church needs to know that, so they know what to do, what decision to make.
Okay. So, Rich, myself will reach out with Jeff Murphy and SFC tomorrow. So, SFC had done all this originally?
I believe so.
Okay.
They designed the original system at the old high school.
Okay.
And all the extensions to it.
Yeah, we just need to make sure that we're separating out that cost from the fire station itself because it is a part of it. And I don't want to beat a dead horse, but there may not be any additional cost. If the fire station is the highest fire load and it requires a 30,000 gallon a minute pump and the cistern has to be 100,000 gallons for the highest fire load, meaning that building, then to tie the church in is just tying the pipe to this system, which is already done. So... Yeah, but you are going uphill. I mean, that's going to be the highest point up there, so there is going to be... So, just to raise a little cross when we get to it that, you know, we may just have to come up.
But I guess my point would have been even better, their cost would be down. I'm just saying they would be one foot the yearly testing cost or whatever. We're just going to figure out how, what that cost is.
And I'll talk, when I talk to Jeff Murphy, I'll ask if he's run into other similar situations where there's non-town entities on the same system. What do they do there?
And he knew they were a non-town entity when their system was first put in 20 years ago. So, it'll come together, okay, I think.
All right.
Okay.
Next.
That's where we are now. We've got a little bit more of a plan that we can move forward. We'll be coming back to you as these things need to be approved to actually move those items forward.
Okay.
The pole relocation was a big one. Getting that started certainly is a...
You say you're going to reach out to Consolidated and... And would, to start construction, or?
No, so Ellie, this will stop the construction. This will, this will stop the full...
Oh, MPO, okay.
Last week, we met at the station. We looked at the poles and everything that needed to happen there. So, that, this will tie Unitil in and Consolidated, and then Comcast will be coming.
They said if we called them, this is last week, but if we called them tomorrow, that they'd be about a month from start of construction. And they said like three or four weeks, one a month for construction.
Comcast will just build us out, and they're going to be the cheapest.
Okay. As far as the, the new septic system, how much of that are we self-performing? Trucking or anything like that, or is that all just going?
It's all on that, towards that one, sir. We can, I can work that deal if you want. Try and work that deal in. I'm just giving up the plan. Give me a full, three different plans, three different quotes. And if that decision gets too high, you know, if they contract it a little bit and we can dress it and using my trucks, but we're not licensed installers.
Right. Just trying to economize where we can.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Um, any other questions? Feel better?
Well, I think we're good for now. And hopefully, we'll be coming back to you at one of your May meetings with more updates, once we can have a meeting.
I think that's that's good, we got some stuff that definitely needs to be addressed, and we can make some progress on that. Excellent.
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen.
That brings us to the first. Any on Zoom?
They're not popping up here.
Moving by.
All right.
We need to appoint a legal signer.
This is what I talked about the last meeting, most, most of the material, they just sent a paperwork to be signed.
The first thing is that municipal, whatever it is, I don't have it in front of me, but basically we're naming you, I believe, Phil, probably as chairman to sign, but you have to have the town clerk certify that it was discussed and agreed to at this meeting, that's how I'm getting it. Deb Powers is here, if you have questions.
I guess we would just need a motion to grant that authority.
Like a motion that the chair signs appropriately for the.
Heritage grant.
Heritage Commission Cemetery Project.
Second.
A motion to second, any discussion? All right, Susan.
Alessio.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Coombs.
Yes.
St. James.
Yes.
And Nelson.
Yes.
Mix it up.
That was alphabetical, too.
All right. New business. So there had been a question regarding evaluations and raises, and this is a two-part discussion. What I would like to do is schedule a Zoom call. I, I know speaking for myself, I have the evaluations complete, I have not met with the person I'm evaluating yet because nobody's been here. But typically what we've done in the past is we have a meeting of the select board to discuss the evaluations, everybody reviews them, and then we go and do the actual face-to-face evaluation with the employee. If there's no objection to doing it that way, what I'd like to do is schedule something that's convenient for most everybody, to just, we can do it on Zoom and.
I guess I misunderstood that because I've talked to both of my people.
Okay.
I thought we were gonna talk to them and then needed the evaluation and go over everything. So either way, I'm either ahead of the camera or you're behind, one or the other. So how are we gonna do it? We're not gonna talk to them forever, right?
Well, I know last year when we did it, there were things that people were brought up that, you know, because the five of us see things that one person doesn't know. And so that was kind of the, the intent of the evaluation was to get everybody's, the select board proper presenting, you know, one person is presenting the evaluation, but it is discussed by the board before it goes to the individual. And I mean, this is just department heads or people who, you know, directly report. So, I mean, that's up to the board, if we wanna continue that way or.
I'm fine with that, but I would like to see us do that meeting as soon as possible because people are waiting for
Absolutely.
That evaluation money.
I, I, personally, I, I think we were just kinda waiting to hope that things got back to normal quicker, and they haven't, so. What's everybody's Wednesday looking like this week?
Give me a timeout, I'll be here.
Evening. Evening, I can do, I can't even run the day.
When does evening start for you?
Time to go to bed.
Me?
I could do after the movie or, or after, actually, no, I have to 2:00.
2:00 o'clock, when?
Wednesday.
It's fine with me.
Now, since I just got here, I have no evaluations.
Yeah, more than anything, this is just so you kinda, you know who the employees are, you can, it's your call.
Well, I would definitely wanna participate, I, I assume, see, I guess I assumed that everything was already done because, waiting, assuming the budget passed. And, and so I'm gonna, I would wanna participate because I'm, you know me, I do have opinions, so. And I would like to participate, and also to understand some of the concerns that you all would have had if there were any or extremely good things.
Yeah, and I would say that there's also, you know, probably stuff that you see.
As JQ public.
Yes, that, that may come up in that evaluation process, so I would, I would, I would hope that you could be there, yes.
Yes, I would definitely want to be there, I don't know how much money we was, I think it was a 4% increase.
So, no, this is, this is the second, so the evaluations are separate from.
The amount to be given out.
In, in this circumstance, typically how that's been done in the past is it's been put to the department heads to do the paper for performance, pay for performance to their own people, they're given a block of money to evaluate out, or to distribute as they see fit, so. Does 2:00 on Wednesday work for you?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so Susan, would you mind setting up that Zoom meeting for 2:00 on Wednesday?
Before we do, actually, can we just push it 2:30, just give me a little flex, I, I should be available too, but are we okay with 2:30?
Did you want me here or do we just soon have a Zoom?
I, I think it's easy enough to do a Zoom on that, that's.
All right.
Everybody from home, Zoom.
Yes.
2:30, is that okay? Sorry, this one, make it tight.
No, from home.
And what, what we'll need everybody to do is by tomorrow at 10, if you can send out your evaluations to the other selectmen to review. So when we meet on Wednesday, people can have read the evaluations and if they have comments or changes or anything that they would like.
You need to.
Yes.
I don't have any way to do that, so I have to do it here or something.
I kinda don't either, I mean, I, we'd have to give it to Susan, scan it and send it out.
See, I do it the same way Rich does, I go out, sit down with a person, spend just three hours, sometimes evaluate them, learn the job, what works, what doesn't work. And then I bring that back to the board.
Before you even get there, you, you have to know what you have for pool of money, I mean, okay, I, I know nothing, all right, I know nothing. But I know that, that Graham has a staff and Rich has a staff and Tammy does. Dawn does as the police chief, does each department get, allocate X amount of dollars in, that's American cola? Do we do, I mean, I, I don't, I, I'm sorry, I, I know nothing about how we pay.
No, so evaluations have been a evolving process.
Okay.
So in the past, you know, when Kevin and I were first on the board, it wasn't a very.
Richard mentioned it?
Yeah. A fair representation of an evaluation, and I, I agree, Dawn, I mean, I go out, I meet with the people and I, you know, I'm sitting in meetings with them and I'm but the final evaluation where we presented the, and this is how we did it last year, I mean, is we met as a board and then we went out, and that was also where the discussion took place as far as, as pay for, pay for performance and the like. This year, there's been a cola or that added in the budget, but what we did last year was we put it on the department heads to distribute that money among their people, rather than just throwing darts at a board randomly and not doing the evaluation, you know, we're letting the people who are evaluating their people do distribute the money.
Okay, make the decision on their staff, which makes sense to do that.
Yes.
I do, I totally agree with that, so when we meet on Wednesday, we're gonna talk about the pool of money that's available, we're gonna review each department, those of you that have done the evaluations, and then we're gonna determine.
So that's the second part of this, and I mean, I guess.
Can I offer this, just, I, I may be obvious, but let's say I'm gonna do Briggs, okay? But anyways, I'm gonna put together my thought process, then when we're together, I'm gonna say, okay, on Briggs, this is where I'm at for quality of work, complete and necessary amount of work, okay, and then I'm gonna say, well, this, I recommend a four or five, and you guys would say, yeah, I'm okay with that, or, you know, you might say, no friggin' way, he's, you know, and then that's the way whoever's doing the evaluation for the person is gonna lead the, lead the discussion.
Right, and that's how it works.
Right, so we.
10:30 every morning, no, I don't think you should be a punctuality one or something like that, and Dawn, not picking on you.
I saw the six over there.
And stating your rationale for it, and then the questions were asked, like, well, did you address this with them, or this had come up, there was an issue where this took place, was that addressed in the evaluation, and that's, that's where that came up. So, and I'm sorry, I'm not probably presenting this very well, the vision for it or whatever, but.
Why don't we just wait and see what happens on Wednesday?
Yeah. Process, as far as pay for performance and raises this year, I would not be in favor of doing that at this time, not knowing what our revenue is gonna be from taxes based on the economics that we are in right now. We could be looking at, I mean, there could be 99% of the people pay their taxes and there's no problem, and everything's fine, but we could also be looking, 60% of the people pay their taxes, and I have a hard time going out and getting a loan to make a budget shortfall when we're, if we're giving raises to people, if people are losing their homes and we're getting a loan to cover raises, I'm not up for that.
Well, you, haven't some people already got their raises?
And I'm not advocating for bulking on commitments that have already been made and are on paper, but, you know.
I disagree, Mr. Chairman, because.
And I'm, and this is the time we can have that discussion, absolutely, so that's why I was trying to have two separate parts of this, is the evaluations definitely need to take place and they need to be you know, completed and given to the employees, absolutely, but, and I'm, I'm just stating my position. And that's, if we have a revenue shortfall where we are not collecting the taxes that we had anticipated, we are gonna have to get the loan to cover the budget. And I can't in good conscience get a loan to give people raises that hasn't already been, I mean, given to them.
Did you, did you say you wanted this discussion now on Wednesday?
No, we can have this now, I mean, this is.
I'm gonna object or go in opposition because I don't think we should penalize employees for this situation. We're a big town, but we're a little town, we'll figure out what to do, I mean, if, in my opinion, if it meant paving one less road to get these salaries out, we should get the salaries out, because most of the evaluations and the money we were budgeting was to bring people up to a standard where they were so far below, mainly fire department, you know, some of the office people, and we're trying to reach what other towns are paying, we're already then a part of the police department, but not with the rest of it. And I think we need to spend that money, just an opinion, I mean, I hate spending taxpayers' money, and you're right, we are, we are a questionable thing, but I actually don't think we're gonna have the tax issue that you're kinda thinking we might.
What percentage, what percentage of the taxes do not get paid on time?
If I can predict that in this, in a normal circumstance?
Normal, is it 10% don't get paid on time?
I couldn't tell you.
Susan, do you know?
Well, we got, we got a, last, what, two meetings ago, we got the tax liens for 2019 that weren't paid percent.
2018, I thought they were.
You're right, yeah, 2018.
And how much was that? I wasn't, I was zooming, so I didn't see that.
Yeah, I can't remember, Susan, do you have that from the town board?
What are we asking about the taxes?
The tax lien that we have in 2018.
Tax liens in 2018 that were put on two weeks ago.
Oh, I don't think I have it with me, sorry.
My point is, let, let's assuming that 10% of the taxes normally don't get collected. I understand what you're saying in terms of we don't, we don't wanna go into debt because, for raises. By the same token, the raises, the difference between, I don't know, $20 and a 3% raise is 60 cents an hour, I, I don't see us really going into debt on the increase, we're talking about the increases, not the basic salaries. I think we need to be responsible for that no matter what, I do, I really do think that.
Well, the game is talking about not paying so much salary.
I understand it, but I'm also saying that the raises are not an appreciable amount, if, if half have already gotten them, you can't say to the other half of the town employees, you're not gonna get one because we're late in deciding what it should be, it's not fair. You gotta, either no one gets a raise this year or it's frozen, or everybody gets their raises and we need to come up with a money.
Okay, here's what I'm seeing, towns are furloughing workers, towns are cutting their budgets by 5% across the board, Atkinson just did that. I, I mean, it is completely up to the board how they wanna proceed, but I, I'm not in the mood to be Santa Claus, I mean, we don't know how mu, how big the bag's gonna be when we go down the chimney. And so it's, there were commitments already made and I fully believe in honoring those commitments, but this is, I mean, you wanna talk about fair, it's not fair to all the people who are out of work right now and don't have money coming in, people who will potentially lose their home because they can't pay their taxes.
But they're not town employees, we're, our job is to be a town.
But, 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 okay, I'll take, I'm, I'm with you on that, to a certain extent, I if you had to furlough people, I'd rather furlough them than not give the raises that they're doing or reduce their hours, I'm, I'm serious, because, because some of the town employees have already received their raises, and that's what's unfair, you can't give some town employees raises because it went into effect in early in March and not give the rest of them. I think the raises, any raises that have to be distributed should get distributed, if we have to reduce hours, that's a whole nother bargain, or furlough people, that's then, then you're talking equity, I can't see giving, if we have adjusted some of the salaries in the police department, so they got their raises and then no one else gets raised, I don't think that's fair. That's what unions are born out of.
I agree.
I would rather furlough, I, I don't wanna furlough either, but if everybody freezes, even the ones that got distributed, then you have no, no one has a raise.
Well, that's.
I'm trying to be fair, that's only one, I want equity. My, you see what the equity is, the equity is either no one gets a raise or we put everything on freeze or, or everybody gets their raises and then if we stole our short money, then we gotta make some different decisions. I just don't think it's fair to give some departments some raises and others not, that's what I don't think is.
I mean, I've conducted an informal poll and most people are looking at the situation and are happy to have a job right now. Not a raise, a job, so, I mean, that's where I'm coming from on this, it's not completely without research or anything.
Okay.
But, I mean, that's my position and I, I mean, I understand yours and.
And I understand, I mean, you're right, I, I, I don't see us going to debt on you, but I do see an inequity here that's not right.
I think, I'd like to make a point, so, we didn't get a raise, we started new employees at what they should be started at, there's a difference. So we started new employees where they should be started, not where we've been paying them, so.
Well, we did a wage study late and then decided to change the, the starting salary of the employees.
That's not a pay increase, that's a rate they should be started at.
But we did, we did, we stepped up the other people in that department as well, we adjusted salaries.
You adjusted, yeah.
Yeah, so we did that, so, so some people did get it, I'm gonna throw something completely different, and I, I get it, I think we gotta look at the budget again. We passed on a 6% increase to the taxpayers with last year's budget, and I think we gotta find some money or at least be conservative with it, but on the flip side, we are making our employees, our health insurance went up 10%, so we pass it on to the employees, and to say they get nothing, but they're gonna have to pay more insurance is a problem, I think we need to relook at the budget, because we passed on a 6% increase last year, which I think is proper, but now it's a different, we're in the COVID world, we're in a pandemic, and I think we gotta look at some budget items and say, do we have to do this, do we not have to do this? But salaries, the employees aren't paying more money for their health insurance alone, forget about our rates, they're, they're taking home less money.
I mean, I, I would recommend that we all process. The process should be, let's do the evaluation, let's see where that goes, let's do that on Wednesday, let's do that process and then we can go from there. I agree, we need to look at funding. I agree with you. And, and go from there.
We have two other department heads here. Did you gel the one away, you know?
The only comment I have was.
Send your speaker.
That's right, I should have asked first. I'll join you. Sorry.
It's fine. The only.
No, sit down.
The only comment I have was, so on Wednesday for your evaluation meeting, are you, so the five of you are going to meet and then you're going to evaluate the members of the highway department, my evaluations?
No. It would be yours, Rich, just basically direct reports to the select board.
So when, if, when, when you do go over like the police department, you know, police officers, the firefighters and the highway guys, I don't think it's been done in the past, but if you could consider having the department head present?
We do.
You do? Okay.
So we did before. We sat down and wrote the report with the department last year.
Well, after being the wire evaluation.
Of them?
Yes.
That, that's fine.
So, for example, Tammy, she's under laser, so whoever did her evaluation.
Jamie, Becky.
Yes, elected officials.
All right, but her staff would fall into hers, so she gets to.
She does her staff and presents it to us.
So we just.
We would still sit down with Tammy when we do her stuff.
Right, so we, we talk with her in terms of her department, with Graham with his department, with Rich with his department. That's, okay, I just want to be sure on the process. So we're, we as select board really just evaluate the department heads?
Yeah, and the inspectors.
And inspectors, okay. Okay, I, I'm.
Susan, Ellen, you know, there's direct reports.
Well, that's a town employee, like this staff here, then, okay, I, I get it.
So, and then the only thing I'll say towards the raises or salary adjustments is, you know, like, I talked to a few people, is that, you know, in March of this year, February this year, when we brought to the budget, you guys set aside fifty thousand dollars for salary adjustments and, you know, the police officers, the new, the new guys and the, the current guys got those. So like, like you had said, you know, in keeping it equal across the board, some of that money was put in for fire department members full-time as well. I, I talked to my guys and, and girl over the last couple of days and, you know, if those were awarded, since they've already been awarded in one department, but if the yearly COLA or pay for performance raises were withheld a little while because of the uncertainty of, you know, what's going to happen in taxes and income for the town, you know, that, that would be something that, you know, I guess is sort of a compromise for my department.
So the compromise would be to, to, let's, let's say we're going to, everyone gets three percent, use that number, three percent, but that's not, can make it effective April one, but not paid out till September?
So you usually.
Retroactive to the goal.
Retroactive to the March tenth though, okay.
Usually they don't come out until like August anyway, right?
Well, we did make it like May last year. I mean, we've been trying. Obviously, this has changed things.
Seriously.
Yeah, and, and.
Just to take what Graham said a step further, when we put that money aside and just pick somebody and just say they were getting three dollars an hour to bring them up to where they should be, I kind of caught the day, kind of threw them out this year for the three percent. And if they were getting that, a three dollar raise, that we weren't going to add the three percent on top of it.
I took it differently when, when I presented it. So if, if, if an average firefighter in New Hampshire from the study that, that Rich did has made the twenty-three dollars an hour and I currently have a guy making eighteen dollars an hour, then he should be brought up to, in my opinion, to twenty-three dollars an hour. And then if he's been there for six months or a year, then he should also get a pay for performance if he's performing as well. If, it may be, in my eyes, it may be less than the, the four percent that I'm going to give somebody that's outperforming everybody else, but I'm a new chief, so.
The only thing, just for, for your sake, when we talk about pay for performance and we put in three percent, it does not mean that if we get a three percent raise, we take Graham's cable, he has three percent of that, that's him as a common head, that man is, well, this guy's, you know, good and deserves this and this person, you know what, they, their salary is already higher, so it's not a three percent across the board, it's for the department heads to make that up. And then we also this year put in a little extra to adjust some salaries, so we have a push.
And, and I, I see two problems that we're doing, correcting. One, you should have a cost of living, even, to me, a cost of living these days is like two percent, it's not a big amount, but you do have performance.
The, the problem was, and again, I missed that day for the budget process, so I was not, Kevin kind of gave me the Reader's Digest version after the fact, but we were trying to do a cost of living adjustment and a pay for performance with three percent. And the intent was to, you know, bring some salaries in line with where they were, you know, in the local area, but.
But if we go from eighteen to twenty-three, that's a five dollars, that's a huge increase in one job. It really is. And I'm not against doing that because we've spent a lot of money training people to send them to another town and that's, that's a start, sorry. I mean, it, it's not right, that's not right to do that. I would rather, we, we're better off paying a little more than the average, expecting more, getting more and not have to be trained every year because it's costing us even more money to, to train new people, whether they be police or fire.
I think, you remember, we did that and corrected that with, unfortunately, the police department had some new hires and we addressed that pre-COVID.
But you also have in the police department, part timers that have been around forever and you can't have a rookie making three bucks more an hour than someone that's been here twenty-five years. It's not right, and those are, those are.
No, I.
The responsibility to, to, to clear out some of those inequities and to, to make it a fair, I would rather that this town, and I always said this with the teacher contract as well, I'd rather have the better paid employees in the state, but you can expect more.
The philosophical question is, there's more money this year than we put for exactly that purpose. The question is, how do we do it or do we, when the taxpayers, you know, that's the whole thing. Believe me, this is the first year, welcome to our frustration over the last couple of years.
And I, I truly understand where Phil is coming from, you know, we've got a very bad economic situation, you don't know what the tax is going to be, but I would rather say, okay, that each department's going to be X amount of dollars, but it won't be payable right now, it'll be retroactive to March tenth and it doesn't, it may not come up to September. I mean, that to me would be the balance and not going to the debt for salary increases, although I'm guessing that who's left, town hall and highway department? Is that what I'm hearing? Did I put that? Okay, all right. Well, let's do the evaluations first, I think this is going to be, to be continued.
Well, I mean, we owe the employees an answer.
We do.
Yeah, news is not like wine, it doesn't get better with age. It's better that they know now what the answer is and. With the unknowns that we are facing, I just would not be, I have no problem, you know, deciding on it, if we wanted, you know, when things are known to us and, you know, the budget is there, yes, this will take place at some point in the future, but you need to be able to bear with us here because we don't know what is going to happen. And, you know, we've already made the decision that all departments need to, before they make any major expenditures, need to run it by us because we have an unknown budget situation. And I don't see this as any, I, I see this as in keeping in line with that directive, you know, we're adding costs on that, yes, while they were budgeted, but we don't know that we're going to have the revenue to support those costs yet, so. That's my.
I have a couple of numbers for you, Ellie. Just looking at past town report, looks like the, the amount we collect on taxes is about seventeen five, seventeen million, five hundred thousand, something like that.
Yeah.
Obviously, I'm looking at two thousand eighteen numbers.
Yeah.
And last year, I go, switch to another page here, last year, I believe, uncollected property taxes last year was about six hundred nine, so seven hundred thousand dollars. So.
No, so it's not that bad.
One, one.
In a normal year.
In a normal year, but.
In, in a, in a boom year, last year was a boom year.
Thank you.
And we're in a bust year.
But at the same, at the same time, Jamie said when she was here, the exact same people don't pay their taxes.
Well, that's what I was going, that, that's where I was going with it.
Right before, before COVID.
Right, because most people, a lot of people have the taxes paid through their mortgage payments. And, and there are, we have a higher preponderance of retired folks who probably don't even have mortgages on their homes that disposses, and it was a different economic group. And I, I was just wondering what percentage don't pay their taxes and I have been, it's the same names over and over, but they play three years ago simply, don't have the taxes, so funny that the, the, I don't know, we're going to be, we're going to find out in the next couple of months, won't we? Because the first tax bill will be going out the end of May, am I correct?
Yes.
Yes, June, June, June first.
We'll have a good feeling on that one. I think the, the bigger, bigger problem may be the December bill.
First.
Yeah, the June bill, but I couldn't be more than that.
Let's say that.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but I really am concerned about being fair.
Who told you life was going to be fair?
It never is. Unions in particular, and I don't want you to put us in a path because we're being penny wise and pound foolish, that's what I'm trying to avoid, that's all.
And I'll say this with the fact that I'm getting a lot of feedback, a lot of unemployed people are making more money now than.
No kidding? Oh my God.
For a few more weeks. June?
June.
That went to June. It's the end of April, that's four weeks.
It's the most, you would think the socialists were in government now, you're getting your unemployment of four hundred and a bonus check and the government's six hundred.
I would really like to have them.
Bernie Sanders won.
Those employees got along, they're calling back their employees, employees like, no way. And that's a problem because.
That's what I'm saying, Bernie Sanders won.
All right, all right. Without getting into all that.
Well, I will tell you, I've, I've talked to my guys, my crew, they're, they're appreciative to have their job, they realize they could have their hours cut, they're not police or firemen, they're not supposedly critical employees, although I defy the police or fire department to operate without us. They're okay with waiting, I've had that discussion and like I said, they appreciate their job, they appreciate the continuation of their health benefits and the retirement system, so my guys are okay with whatever decision, obviously, every one of them wants more money. And I, I explained the situation, the way I saw things, obviously, I was in here a month ago talking to you folks about revenue stream and each department needs to look at cutting back and if I was the board of selectmen, I'd be demanding a five percent cut in everyone's budget. I'm up with it, find it, figure it out.
And that's, yeah, then maybe, maybe.
That's what I'd be asking if I was sitting in your chairs, and figure it out and do your job. If you can't do your job, it's time to move on. But that's what I'd be suggesting, but I'm just, I've had the discussion and I've also told my guys, there'll be a letter of review in their files by the end of this week, a letter of recommendation if they decide to pick up and move elsewhere, because that's, I don't, I absolutely don't feel like that's going to happen, but that's there for them because as a manager, that's what I think I should do. It's their option. But they understand and they're okay with it. I will tell you, you've, you've hired some people and you've, basically, you made the commitment at town meeting, there's been some new hires, thinking, and kind of alluded to that, you know, this was probably going to be the new salary that hasn't happened yet and that needs to be corrected.
That's correct.
It absolutely needs to be corrected. Some of these people left jobs to come here in just the last few months and it hasn't happened yet and you're causing them economic harm because, let's face it, we kind of made that commitment, so.
We did, we did make that commitment.
And I, I for one have never advocated for not following through on the signed commitments that we have made to people, absolutely.
Yep.
I'm simply advocating for a, let's see what the temperature of the water is for, let's just give this a little time to play out before, and I have no problem with retroactive or anything like that, you know, we can do that, but I think we owe the employees an answer, you know, on this, it was raised and I've made my position on, but I think, one, they should be told what the plan is and, two, they should get their evaluations.
And if I heard the fire chief said the same thing, well, why? His people are, would be okay if they had to wait, so maybe that's a compromise.
Or maybe they're going.
Maybe that's a compromise, we don't, I'm not saying no yet, we're going to play it out, but we, we owe it to our employees to at least give the evaluations, see what the department heads are recommending for it is. I think there still should be some price line adjustments, whether we do the pay for performance process was a different thing, but I think we should have a conversation, maybe not, but I don't want it to say no right off the bat. I think the compromise is tell employees to hang in there with us a little bit, but at least look at the evaluations.
So, so I will tell you, all my guys, I, I believe these other two gentlemen, our evaluations were all done in, before February first, so the employees have had their evaluation, you know, I'm speaking for my department, I'm not going to speak for the other two that are sitting here, but the employee valuations were done and turned in by February first, it's, it's, you know, it's your side of the ball.
Yeah.
It's going to be decided.
Again, yeah, we're behind in our house and unfortunately, none of us are here full time to do evaluations and things like that and so we're going to be, and given the situation, Rich has asked if we can do this in person here on Wednesday at two thirty, does that work for everybody?
Two thirty, yeah.
Yeah.
Does that work for you?
Sure. So you're going to come here instead?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a non, it's a non-public, it's a valuation.
Yes, directly pertaining to employee. Thank you. As far as pay for performance, the pay for performance and all that, what is the feeling of the board? I mean, is that going to be given out now or is that going to be?
I think we talk about it Wednesday. Agreed.
But I don't think that should be a non-public session.
Well, it will be, yeah, definitely, because if I've got a high performer and I got some.
Well, I'm not talking specific people, I'm saying in general, I mean, we have to make the decision.
Well, my opinion is we should give out what is budgeted, whether we do it now or delay it, I don't care, I mean, if, if we tell these people we're going to give three percent or whatever, we have to delay it until we collect at least the first round of taxes, if not close to the second round, I think they'd be okay with that, but we need to make a decision. And I might move to be to go for what is budgeted out.
Okay, let me throw this out there. Just so our employees have a target date where they can expect an answer, would August first be acceptable for us to revisit, you know, so we can go through the evaluation process as we, as we have in the past, the department heads can make their evaluation, their recommendations for PPP.
PPP.
Pay for. From the past and, but they don't take effect until we know the situation that we're facing.
Just to make sure I'm understanding that, we're going to take John Doe that works for Grant. And we're going to give, well, we're going to give Grant his. And we're gonna give, well, we're gonna give Graham his three percent, we're saying August first, he gets to give that money out, but we're gonna revisit it and then decide, but we're gonna commit the money.
There will be a final decision made on August first, it'll be a rough, like, so all the mechanisms will be in place if revenues are where they should be to meet, to match our budgetary needs, come August first, if we're there, that money's released, if it isn't, you know, the money is still earmarked, it just, it's just not happening yet.
I would be against that, I'd be fine with August first, we're a commitment on when we give the money, but I think we ought to give a commitment now on what they're getting. In other words, if we're gonna do three percent.
How can we tell our employees that you might get a raise because we think you earned it?
Right.
But we haven't frozen any money in our house, we haven't frozen any budgets, and did I miss something? We haven't frozen the budget, we haven't told any department heads to hold back.
We did tell them to withhold on any major expenditures until they ran it by the board.
Yeah, major expenditures, yeah.
What I would ask is, at what point are we gonna look at our department head and say, what can you find from them? Stop looking at that.
We did, we did have the discussion, the, the problem with budgets, you know, look at, Graham and I have mostly people, that's, that's the bulk of it, so like, we get rid of people, we can save money, which we're already short handed. Rich's budget is more stuff than it is people, so I think each budget is, yep, we'll look at separately and say, okay, we can cut money here, but we gotta get rid of fifty percent of your people.
Is, is it legal to grant a raise and then pay it for a while?
I, I think, here's, here's, here's where I have a problem, I agree with what you're saying, we're in tough time, I agree, but we went into the town meeting, open in public, we talked about, Rich did a lot of work, we researched, well, our retention in this town is terrible, we can't hold on to good people, we lose them, is that correct? We lose them, so what happens is, we go to the board, we go to the budget committee, we go to the town, we need to retain our good people, it's costing us a fortune to hire and train and lose them to another town that's paying more money, I've been doing this for years, I've been going to the board of selectmen for years and saying, this is costing us a fortune and putting the town at risk because we're always short handed. Graham has the same issue, so we commit, we resolve the problem, we put fifty thousand in the account to make it, so his people will stay, my people will stay, and we can retain people. But now you're telling us that, well, we're not gonna do that now, the people you've hired and you've told that this money will be paid to them to retain them, I'm sending three guys to the academy in two weeks, so when they, so when they graduate, they're gonna go somewhere else?
I've never advocated that, I'm saying, we made the commitment, if we hire for, for a rate, I'm, I'm in favor of paying that rate, I've never said that.
I think he's talking two different issues.
No, no, but what I'm seeing is, you're talking two different issues.
So we got the fifty thousand, and we got the pay for.
Again, so, but, but they make out, if you're trying to respond, that's fine, if you're gonna, most of his budget is like mine, it's people, what can I please?
Well, I could, is there a pattern to cut off?
But that's my point entirely, you get the two biggest departments who are getting the raise, then you get the two smallest, we're not gonna give them the raise, are you kidding me? Sorry, I, I, I just can't, you're not making any sense. If we fund the two biggest departments of payroll.
Yeah.
And we don't fund the town hall and the highway, are you kidding me?
No, no, I'm just saying.
I'm just saying.
I'm giving, I'm saying, like, Rich has a lot of, a lot of, of building roads.
I know what you're saying, John, I, I know what you're saying, I'm.
You're talking about, you're paying, you're talking payroll, you're talking about where to cut the budget? I'm saying where to cut, I'm saying where to cut money, so if you're asking me to cut money, that means I cut people, how many firefighters, how many EMTs do you wanna cut from the budget? I'm thinking we need to look at a big picture here, and, and Rich, and we talked about it in the last meeting, Rich says, yeah, I can cut the roads if you need more money, right, Rich, am I wrong? I don't wanna say something out of line here.
I can.
So he, Rich agreed, hey, I can dig in, we don't have to build roads this year, I've got.
He's got salt left over.
He's got salt left over, I got money in road building, so, I mean, and that's what they've done historically, unfortunately, for him over the years, they take his road building money and they grab.
It's getting tested.
Yeah.
We need to move on.
Well.
I agree.
I'm not in favor across the board cuts, because I don't think we should be cutting people, but I also don't think it's right to say, you're not getting the laptop you've been looking for for three years.
I agree.
You're not doing any roads here, but this guy's getting a raise, that doesn't make any sense to me either, we're either tightening our belt or we're not, you don't go out to dinner, you know, while you're turning off the heat, it's, you're on beans and rice, or you, you're living the high life, it's one or the other, I mean, and, but, yeah, we can cover this in Wednesday's evaluation, and, but I, you know, at a minimum, whatever we reach on Wednesday. You know, it needs to be a matter of public record where this, how this took place, and again, this could go on for hours, and everybody needs to kind of look at this, but.
Can, can we have a public session after we come out of here, public on Wednesday? Can we do that?
We don't.
Is it logistically difficult?
What if we revisit it at, at the board of selectmen?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, it, it would be an item on the next agenda for the board of selectmen, so I guess.
For public seminars.
Right. I would say, we will have more event, more information for you on the status of those things at our next meeting, and that's the best we can offer right now. So I think we'd beat that worst to death, so 2:30 Wednesday here, we'll complete the evaluations, we'll be getting in contact with the department heads and letting them know where we're going from there.
Sure, thanks.
I just wanna be sure that legal for us to, let's say we decided to withhold the increase till later in the year.
Nothing is gonna be decided or voted on in a non-public session.
Okay.
Nothing, so that will take place in a public session, but in the course of doing evaluations, we will have to discuss raises for personnel, and those can't be public because.
That's correct.
It's, it's detrimental to the employee, so trying to toe the line here on both of those things.
Okay.
But.
I'll go with that.
Okay. Next on the, anybody, we good with that? All right, next is donations received for emergency fund, so we have received three checks totaling fifteen hundred dollars, is there anything we have to sign, or we just have to vote to accept?
I believe you just need to vote to accept them.
Okay, so I've spoken to the state attorney general's office regarding our COVID-19 relief fund, and I got some good information from him, they're very helpful, I'm gonna put Cindy in contact with them just to make sure we're doing it right, but we can solicit bits for that, some towns are actually doing GoFundMe pages to do that, we have to specify what the fund will be used for and when it expires, but we can do it, anything over five thousand dollars has to be a public meeting where we accept the funds, we're, it's been our standard operating procedure that we always put that out in public, but. So I just wanted to update the board on that, put some more notes, so it comes in as unanticipated revenue, and it goes to the trustees of the trust fund, but it does not go into the, it's fully expendable by the select board, the only thing we would have to do is designate Ellen as someone who is legally authorized to expend it up to a certain amount, so she's gonna be the one who's doing the evaluation of people for.
Need.
The need.
So we designate her as the agent to expend?
Yes, and we would give her a dollar amount within that.
Okay. That makes sense, does that preserve the confidentiality of any individuals coming before?
Yeah, so that's, what that allows us to do is not have to make it a public, a matter of public record when someone is receiving funds, so, and then there was another email from him that I got right before the meeting that I wasn't able to read, but, so just preliminary to the public, we are starting a COVID-19 relief fund, so if people wanted to know that their funds are going directly to townspeople, local community, it will be that, we'll have some more information coming up on the website and cable channel, and we'll keep you in the loop.
So did you need a motion for these three checks?
I am gonna need a motion.
So I'd like to make a motion to accept three checks totaling fifteen hundred for the emergency fund, and selecting with the, as agent to expend with the guidance of Ellen.
No, no, you, you gotta make Ellen the agent to expend.
Ellen's, okay, so Ellen, I, and.
Do, preserve the confidentiality of those in need, Ellen needs to be the agent to expend up to X amount of dollars, it's what, I mean.
We don't know much, we'll need count, up to five thousand?
Well, five thousand, we have to do it in a public meeting, I think you said, right? That's it, to accept the five thousand, but, so make a motion to set up an emergency, to accept these three checks, to set up the emergency fund.
COVID-19 emergency fund.
And have Ellen Faulkner as agent to expend.
Got a second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Susan.
Alessio. Briggs.
Yes.
Coombs.
Yes.
St. James.
Yes.
Anna Wilson.
Yes. All right, motion carries unanimously. Committee liaison reports, I know Rich has got one.
Yeah, I'll start with the, the recreation department, I think several of us had a conversation today with Paul, it's his recommendation that they do not have camp this year, and he said a few other towns have already canceled, and basically, we're saying not to have it because of the fact that cleaning the bathrooms, maintaining distance, all those types of things would be next to impossible, and, you know, the thing we mentioned was that if somehow this August cleared up immediately, he thinks he could put something together in the short term, later in the summer, if it came to that, that we think we need to give the parents a lot of leadway because some of them count on that, right, for daycare every day, so that was his recommendation, and I told him that we had already canceled all summer events, and that we didn't specifically say that, but that we would talk about it tonight.
Unfortunately, it makes sense to do stuff to cancel the program for this summer, unfortunately.
I would agree with that. I would agree with that recommendation.
Yeah, until we get further, if, if, it's even the Paul Butler's recommendation to cancel it, and then if he can pull it off, we, we address it, others will consider cancel.
Get quite a lot of people that have already paid, so we probably need to make that a motion now, a motion, and then also, and then instruct all, whoever, Paul, Cindy, do we listen to you turn the money over, or spend the money?
Keep the guns into it, every end.
Got a motion for us?
Let's add that to the motion.
Second, refund, second, motion and a second, any further discussion? Actually, there's probably, yeah, so you got that edit on there, okay. Hold call.
Alessio.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Coombs. St. James.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Did you get a call, well, I, I don't know if this is liaison or not, which, which one? There was a, a call regarding a RV.
Yes, so we went down, I looked at it, and great one.
Yes.
And I had the health officer down, to check the subject system out, and the complaining party was absolutely right, and that problem was underpaved.
Okay.
It's been, have they committed, pulled a permit for a ninety day stay?
I saw that they made a request for it, yes.
Yeah, so I found out from Robert, he was just trying to get some background on it, so.
Okay, that's good.
That was the only liaising I've had, so.
Yeah, Susan called me, went down, verified it, I called Peter Proctor, he went right down, resolved the subject ended it, and they were told to pull a permit, which we found.
You've been in touch with Tori?
Yeah. Okay, a couple of other things, so I've been working with the schools, so they're trying to, they would like to hold graduations here, and so Rich, Rich was with me today, and they came up with a plan about, I think, the town, so chose to do so, and the superintendent of schools agrees as well, we met with the, with the principal of the high school, so they'd like to have a graduation for a hundred and fifty students, and the plan is to do it on the planes, all the sections of the planes, probably on a Saturday or Sunday, first weekend of June, with all of these safety things in place, about six feet of distance between all parties, so just feeling out the board, the superintendent hasn't seen it yet, and given his stamp of approval, but there's gonna be short time, the time we come back in two weeks, and I'd just like to get a straw poll from the board, to see what their feeling is, and allow them to use the planes, and we'll work with them.
My, my question, why would they want to use planes and not the football field where they've got the parking?
Distance.
Football field?
Yeah.
For a hundred and fifty people?
Yeah, so we use the whole planes, I mean, all the planes, from all the way, all the way to the end, to have that amount of room to stretch out, that's what you're gonna need. We did it today, and Rich and I did it with Brian Stack.
Not even football field, I'd say the other field, because it's like.
Yeah, even if you combine the other field and football field, all that area's gotta be as big as the planes.
For, for parking and for accessibility to the students.
It's not the kids, you can find the space for a hundred and fifty kids, but you got families, it's more than.
Yeah.
I'm okay if they want that, I, I could care less.
We actually, we actually did the plan for it, to allow, we're doing a lot of park, and show one lane of the back there, there's a hole.
I can't believe they're coming to you before they've even talked to the superintendent.
They, they were, they, they haven't gone, but the superintendent told them to get some ideas, and so we sat down with him today, and he's gotta bring it to Tom on Wednesday, but if Tom approves this, I just wanna make sure the board, I don't wanna say we can do it, and then the board hasn't approved it, so that's kind of where I'm going, so if I go back to Brian Stack and say, okay, the board is in favor of that, so it is an option, and then Tom's gonna make the final decision.
You collecting twenty-five hundred bucks?
Yeah.
I guess my opinion is, I have no problem with them doing it, but it's not our decision on whether it happens or not.
No, no, it's just permission for them to use it, that's all.
Cancelled all activities on the planes.
I'm getting a message that says, what about bathrooms? High schools got bathrooms, planes, oh.
Well, that's, that's their issue. I have no issue if you and the road agent are comfortable with the, the towns rolling it, then I am in favor of it.
What about favor, are you a favor agent, too?
A favor agent?
Yeah, are you a, who's Susan?
I don't know. I guess it'd be the, the, they were talking about, is that considered a, yeah, a return of money?
Oh, as long as they can social distance.
So.
I, I don't know, guys, I, I guess.
So we would call ahead of time and check to make sure it's okay.
Sure, yeah, as long as.
But I'm, the only, the only reason why I'm asking tonight, because if this is an option for them, I could tell Brian, I spoke to the board, they said, okay, you can use it as an option.
And it's a plan that you can run on the side.
Whether they're gonna do it or not, it's, it's gonna be up to the superintendent's for me.
I guess that's my opinion, is if all the powers above say do it, then I have no problem with it, but I can't say I'm saying do it.
I don't know.
All right, straw poll, straw poll, hold call, let's do it, let's keep moving here.
This is about the school?
Yes.
Graduation?
We're just doing a straw poll, it doesn't have to be a motion.
No.
Okay, Alessio, no?
Whatever they feel is the best option, I'll support the schools.
Yes.
Yes. I didn't get it, so you just wanna know if you're in favor if.
If they could do the plane.
Okay. I've got a no.
I have to see the plan, I can't, I can't give you blanket yes, but I'm gonna say no, I'll stay with the no, until I see a plan, I'm gonna stay with the no.
Okay, Briggs, yes, Coombs, yes, St. James, yes.
Yes.
All right, so it's a conditional yes.
Okay.
One other thing, Rebecca called me today, and she just wanted to know if there were any plans for reopening the town buildings, and if so, I haven't given them any discussion, so I don't think there has been any discussion.
I mean, we're waiting on guidance from the state, we know the coastal march, and whatever Primax says, of course.
And as a follow up to that, the reason she was asking is that the friends wanna hold their annual plant sale, and we're gonna do that on May twenty-third, and. And, um, they want to do even drive by, they want to put the list of the plants online and have people order it, and then you drive by, but they need to use the facilities in order to do that. And, um, that, that was, I believe, why she was asking was because the friends want to have the plant sale on May 23rd. But right now, everything's closed, am I correct on that? It's still, it's still closed even till then. We don't know what the governor's going to do.
I think as of right now, it's May 7th is when this goes through, as it sits.
May 7th, okay.
Because I expected it to be May 25th.
The guidance from the state, it's May 7th.
The emergency orders, but to stay at home.
Right, that's, yeah. The standard of emergencies has been extended for three months.
But the other things have not.
The other things have not, they expire on the 4th or the 7th, either this.
I think it's the 4th.
Yep. I know some towns are still having planning for meetings.
Can you forward along to?
All right.
So it's. Maybe overstep my bounds, but I know I ordered for Chief Briggs and myself some supplies so that we can, our employees basically come to work. I've got temporal, or actually forehead, you're supposed to shoot yourself with the laser beam and check your temperature. As long as the employee's not running a temperature, they can go to work. If they are running a temperature, they have to go sit in the car. Or if I'm not available, then obviously my second, and we'll make a decision on that employee. But, um, if that's kind of how you want to set the town buildings up when we open this, this place up, especially the town hall, I would think you'd want to do that with all your town workers. They come in, sanitize their hands. Uh, we need to have maybe some guidance from the health officer as far as whether they should be wearing masks.
It should be the health officer making those determinations on the spot, not you and them.
Well, I'm, I'm telling you, I'm doing things because things are going to happen, and you're not going to be able to. Think I will have it by the 15th of May if we decide to open the buildings then. So I've already done. Pole socks, we call them. They're cheap, they're 50 bucks apiece. I ordered four of them, one for the highway, one for the police, and two for the town hall. Beyond the library. I think, I think I'm probably going to be ordering some stuff for the library also. Um, you find that works, Don, with your employees? That way, at least you know your town employees in and, uh, know their temperature.
Could I ask how the pole socks is going to help you?
I'm sorry?
The temporal scanner, I'm okay with that, but the pole socks, how's that going?
That's one of the things you look for with COVID-19, is a low, low blood sat, low oxygen saturation in your blood.
A little incapacitated.
Yeah.
I think you're going to show the temperature before anything. I'm not.
No.
One of the four criterias, I saw that too.
They, they haven't handed that down five hours, so all we're doing is checking the temperature.
Yeah, that's who we've had, the nursing home, the jail, I don't know if I want to spend $200.
How are you spending it?
We're going to have to have precautions in place when we do open up the buildings for now.
Okay. In lack of. Be making these decisions, to be honest with you. I'm fine with that, just tell me what you want, and when you want it done by, and I'll do the best I can, but.
I have a question for you. Try the pole socks, because you're going to know a low oxygen saturation before pole socks.
All right, so, can I throw them aside though?
Well, hang on just one second, if we can. What are you basing that off of? Like, is there a protocol that, and I'm not trying to question your motives or anything, I'm saying, is there a protocol that you're basing this off of that is from the CDC or something?
There's like four warning signs that we'll look, that you look for, for any COVID-19 patient. One's temperature, one's blood ox, um, then, then it's the basic questions, your travel, exposure. And to be honest with you, I'm not an expert, I'm just a first responder. You got.
Travel, exposure, temperature, oxygen.
Yep, so it's just one of those things, and it's, and I thought for your employees, a quick check, just $200, I'll pay for them, don't worry about it, boys and girls.
No, thank you for taking the initiative on that, but I think what needs to take place is the health officer needs to come up with a protocol to enter any town building. And with those items that he said, so are you still his liaison? Do you want to relay that to him?
Sure.
I just want to make sure we have, and what needs to take place is those need to be printed out and put on the outside of every door.
Sure, so, and the other things you need to look at is any public coming in the building? Do you want, you know, what's the policy procedure going to be for any public coming in the building for the next two or three months? They going to be masked up? Are we going to have basically surgical masks for everyone that comes in the building? Are you going to have them for your town employees? You're going to have N95s for your town employees, you know? Because I think we're going to open up all of a sudden, or we're going to get the green light, and we need to have a plan, and we don't have one right now, is what I'm telling you.
I think you're right about that, I think it's going to be like flipping a switch. I'm just going to say one day.
We're not going to be ready.
Well, I, I think we have that. Thank you for doing that. Go ahead.
So, contact with Rich, we speak every day about PPE and GRAM. We've been able to get a bunch of donations of PPE, a lot of donations from PPE to the system, to the state, what have you. Uh, local company, the, one of the employees, Bruce in Kingston, called them, they have a cleaning service. So if we have anybody that's, has anything that needs to be taken care of, whether it be a building, a cruiser, an ambulance, whatever, they've agreed to come in and clean any of our buildings or any of our vehicles for free. So we have that as a resource as well. That's, that other device should be coming pretty quick, I guess. Oh, we hope so, yeah.
Yeah, I think the health officer needs to come up with a protocol for rebuilding, and then we just need to disseminate that, and he'll just have to liaise with you, whatever additional equipment he'll need, have him touch base with you.
Include the library too in that call, because that's where you have the big traffic flow.
We'll have to assume the criteria, so we'll be able to make a job.
Correct, that's correct.
All right. Is that all you had, Rich?
Yeah, one more thing. I, I signed and sent to the state the landfill closure report. It's one of those things I've been doing for the last 14, 16 years. I'm going to make a recommendation, I think I mentioned it before, that you guys get, um, CMA engineering in here and go over the landfill, the closure, the closure reports, what needs to be done. And I really think the chairman of the board of selectmen should be the person, it's its name that goes on the dotted line, not because it's you, Phil, and I want to dump it on you, but, you know, it's, it's, it's pretty important. It could be a huge liability for the town. And, well, no, I'm not going to be here, so it should be, you can assign it once you get it, but the board of selectmen needs to make sure they're getting that at least, and then reassigning it, and making sure those tasks get done. That's a huge liability that's hanging over the town, and you want to, you want to keep your fingers in it. Um, I've done it for the last 16, I think 16 years, but, uh, yeah, so. I'm going to make, I've already made the recommendation that my name to the engineers, and, um, you'll probably get something in the mail from them.
Susan, can you reach out to them and get some availability for them to come out?
CMA?
CMA Engineering, they're out of Portsmouth, the owner of the company is Craig Muslin.
They've got their name on the paperwork.
Yep, and Bob Grillo is the other person that has, I've been working with for years.
Okay.
That's it for me, good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich.
All right, um, quickly through the correspondence.
Oh, please.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Uh, I was in it tonight in my, some fight apartment, um, two invoices that can be submitted to the state to bill for horrifying that would this, that happened this week. And it needs a signature from, I would assume, the chair. So I would like to make a motion to allow the chair to sign two billable things to the state by March of August. Let's take a motion.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Here are none, both call.
Yes. Briggs.
Yes.
Coombs.
Yes.
St. James.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
And the only other thing, I'll put in liaison, because it just happened, but I would like to make a point of order. I believe in our Zoom meeting, Susan, you, the public has an opportunity to ask any questions.
Yep.
And we have two public comment sections. Okay, I don't think it's proper for us as a board member to be receiving text messages and asking that. It's not an opportunity that all the residents of Kingston, I think they have a proper opportunity to go into a Zoom and ask the question, and it could be passed. I don't think we should be doing that, we shouldn't be using our cell phones during a meeting, I don't think it's proper.
I agree, and I do see questions, and I'm trying to wait for the public comments. Sometimes the subject matter has gone by, but I do have one when we get to it.
So I would just say, I don't think it's a proper use of cell phone during a meeting.
Sometimes it is.
Well, these.
Yeah, but I'm saying for a question like that.
I get them on the chat thing on Zoom, or people, when we get there, they can, they can unmute and chime in if they want to, so they have the opportunity.
Any further committee liaison reports? All right. Perfect segue, public comment number two.
I did have a question for the selectmen, isn't there a 70, this had to do with the budget matters, isn't there a $70,000 contingency line that will help fund any COVID expenses at this point? Isn't this the type of emergency this is there for?
Budget committee?
Repeat the question again.
$70,000 contingency.
$70,000 contingency line.
Well, I think with, I mean, that's a, that's a, it's not a budget committee, that's a selectmen question, but I think we're not at that point yet. I mean, I think we'll see how we're going to spend them, but I don't think we're at a point to decide what natural is the emergency fund.
No, they're, what they're asking, is it available and needed here?
Well, it is, but I mean, I think we've got to look at the whole budget in general. We just, we just had that discussion.
I think we've had a lot of expenses related to.
Go ahead.
We've already had. We've had a lot of overtime because of this, we've had a lot of, you know, things like that, that, you know, we've had to dip into, and we don't know how long this is going to last, so.
Isn't that, isn't 80% of that reimbursable?
So.
When's that going to happen?
Depending on what it is.
I think when Susan tells us we have to tip into that, we do that, I don't think we can see any money from the federal government for.
Till next year.
Exactly. Or, you don't know, the, the governor is, got $1.3 billion, he could allot so much to each town, but I don't think we're ready. I would say, yes, the contingency fund could, but that's a vote of the selectmen. We're not.
Did I miss something? I'm just, what I heard was, it is available, it's needed, isn't that kind of what they said?
That's the question, isn't there a $70,000 contingency line that will help fund any COVID expenses at this point?
Yeah, this, you know. And we could move money between lines and everything else, but I don't think we're, yes.
Short answer, ask and answer, okay.
Any other comments from the public?
Got nothing more up here.
Okay, correspondence, um, our friends, friends at the DES are letting us know that they're going to charge this money, but they haven't sent us a bill.
DES for the PFPA work. They're going to send us a bill.
For what?
Says in the, I've got the letter in front of me.
As previous discussed with the town, the town has been required to take action to investigate and remediate PFOS impacts from release of firefighting foam associated with fire department activities, still unproven by voluntary. We appreciate the work completed by the town today, so much so, they're going to charge us. As part of this process, the town is liable for cost incurred by the state in responding to the release pursuant to RSA such and such. Oh, they're charging us for the review of technical reports, which they demanded, and oversight of work performed to confirm that the investigation and cleanup are completed in a manner, so they're basically charging us for the stuff they mandated us to do.
That's DES.
Yeah. Good reading.
Much of the bill, much was.
Just warning us that it's coming, and then we got a second email saying, oh, we understand that, you know, you might not be able to pay it right away.
Can you forward that to someone, please? All right.
Actually, what we should do is we could call our state senator, it wraps.
Yeah, that worked out so well last time.
Well, we didn't, we didn't ask them, we hired the people we hired to take care of the town's problem.
I sent it to someone there, I guess. There is no bill, but saying they got a chair.
Focus can always put in the circular file.
I'm sorry, Don, I didn't mean to cut you off, that's all. No, I, I, I guess we let them know the problem last time, and they really weren't helping us thus far.
Yeah, with that.
Oh, she left you the out say, they have, you can read the out say.
Unfunded mandate.
That is an unfunded mandate, exactly.
And that's illegal.
That is an unfunded mandate. That's why I suggested.
All right.
I think that's why, because the court actually said you postponed it because of that whole thing.
Well, we'll just put that in the bottom of the pile.
Now, when they want us to do certain things, we don't send it to them, because they're going to charge us for it.
I agree.
Okay, moving on.
We have an intent to cut for West Shore Road. And Dawn, you had received this?
I did, I guess it needs a little bit more work.
I don't have the, um, the cutter, the logger's name, or the amount. If, if it's the one that I got from you, I've got two there.
That's the one down to the end of, whether you're doing the digging down off the box or.
There's two, one's West Shore Road, the other's Smallpox Road.
I'm not sure if I brought it upstairs, Phil, I think I left it, because I was going to call him for more information, I don't know if you have two intents there or not.
The other is Smallpox Road, it's a house, it's a house line.
The other ones maybe not, because I saw that.
So I've got one for West Shore Park Road, we don't have enough information for that one, or we do?
That one, I believe, does it got the, has the amounts on it? In the logger?
Yes.
That one's okay, the, the one that I didn't have everything, I didn't put in the folder.
And that's the Smallpox Road one?
I believe, yes, that's the one that I just.
Is there any opposition to me signing this intent to cut?
It was Wilson, the other one that you brought.
Yeah.
Yeah, he, he didn't fill it out entirely, so I can.
Actually, everybody wants to sign this. There's five spots on here.
Yeah, I started to put in your name, so you just have to sign next to your name, sorry, I, I was putting the print.
This tax credit, Dawn.
Yes, that's the one.
I believe that's okay now, right?
Yeah, it's okay now. I've got the daughter, my son, taking care of the finances for the mom, they got us all on the telephone together, and I guess the question should be the right?
Mm-hmm.
We're ready to go. And then Smallpox, we're holding off on this one, the intent to excavate, we need it. All right, I'm just going to read this one. FYI, we received $4,500, $5,406.54 from federal HHS for our share of COVID-19. for our share of COVID-19 funds towards providers who build Medicare in 2019. It's under $10,000, so Cindy went ahead and accepted the funds. The stipulation is we cannot charge anyone with COVID-19 any more than we would charge at an allowable rate. So any COVID deductible has to be written off. She doesn't feel it's an issue. Any questions on that, anybody? Have a letter from Virginia Morse here. My three-year term of appointment to the historical district commission has expired. I have enjoyed serving on this board and feel that I have become quite knowledgeable about the ordinances and regulations that govern this land use board. Therefore, I respectfully request that I be reappointed to serve another three-year term. Susan Crump?
Virginia.
She must not have gotten the email that everything was extended.
I was just gonna ask.
Yeah, we extended it for three months.
We extended it last week, so she probably, that probably came in after she sent the email that everything had been extended.
I think she got that, but that was for herself, that she somehow didn't get reinstated, or.
Do you wanna just follow up with her?
I think we've covered the.
We just, we are covered, because the motion was that everyone that was.
No, I mean, just let her know.
I'll do that.
Okay. And then we have a letter from DRA for total equalized evaluation. Fascinating reading. We don't need to sign this or anything, do we?
No, we got, she said, yeah, we got that electronically.
All right. You're getting a bill from the county side.
I hope that bill's going down, she.
It is. Actually, we have proposed a below Lachey's budget. And just so you know, we discussed it, you can't, you have to pay that bill to the outside, just on the county side. Kick plate.
We don't have to pay anything. We don't have to right now.
That's right, too.
Unfunded mandates, hold.
They all go in the same.
All right. Minutes.
Before we, we have one more thing on there that's not on the agenda. Dawn went to Ron Conant's property, Shannon Doyle Drive, Shannon, it's right Shannon Doyle Drive. And his neighbor, who is on Cooper's Road, has done a lot of dredging of the pond there. To the point that he's probably taken out so much he should have had permanent. But not only has he dredged the pond, but he put all the material on Conant's property. He didn't leave it on his own property. And he's had a survey that's clearly marked, 99% of it's on Conant's property.
But they didn't call the staff on late, but the neighbors are going over to talk to him, either remove it from the property.
So they may resolve it.
Okay.
Is that DES issue?
Well, that is my question, is whether we wanna have somebody look at it and just do an estimate of the material to see if it is a DES issue. You know, to have.
Can you dredge land without just on your own?
There's a limit on how much you can do, and I think it's beyond that. I mean, it's very large, probably.
Well, that, I don't, you think that, that didn't matter?
Not all of it did, because there's some concrete in it and some other stuff. But I was just thinking that maybe I would get with our town engineer if it was okay, and just spend a little time just to go look for the value. Or do we wanna just leave it as a civil issue?
Personally, I see it as a civil issue, and if they wanna call the DES, they can. In my experience, the DES really doesn't take any action when we call them, and then we end up spending money for surveys and things like that.
Well, it's already been surveyed, yeah, it's surveyed. It's, I mean, I think the only thing the engineer would do would be to look at it and say, yes, that's enough material, which would be DES, or no, it's not, you know, but. That's what I'm related to.
Well, I mean, the wetlands regulations, the DES.
I can't remember.
Or the dredging field regulations would be in DES purview, it wouldn't be.
Maybe I'll call them up to find out the yardage, because obviously, if it's a small amount of yardage, it's over. If it's large, I can pretty much estimate the yardage, so. I'll just find out what that limit is and handle it, and then tell it, or draw it into civil issue.
I think they, maybe they've solved it. They may have, my understanding today.
Okay.
The last thing is the reply to Kevin's comment that cell phones should be out of the issues, that Zoom is kicking in and out, and people can't stay on Zoom. That it shuts people out constantly. And I had that problem too when I've been on it. So, just for the record.
Do we know why it's kicking people?
No, I got kicked out once, but I was still there, just like it's.
It's part of.
My screen.
That's part of the money we decided not to pay, which we got that out of the.
Well, the meeting can go on forever, but I don't know why.
I thought we spent, hang on, I thought we spent our $15 a month so we could go along with the 40 minutes on this thing.
The meeting's going on, and people have been coming and going. I didn't realize they were getting kicked out.
All right, well, we're, it's a fluid situation. We're doing the best we can. I do concur, and it's hard with all this crap going on. I I just think we need to minimize our phone usage as much as possible. Obviously, if someone has a call, you can take it, but.
I'll make a motion if we accept the minutes from April 13th. Is that correct?
It's the 14th, it was.
14.
Because you meant a Tuesday and Monday.
It got postponed.
No, that's right.
Oh, that's right. I was going two weeks back.
We got a motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Alessio?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Coombs?
Yes.
St. James?
Epstein.
Epstein, Wilson?
Yes.
Minutes carried. Do you have anything else? Anything else?
We have just one, very quick, non-public kind of motion.
Okay. That includes. Thank you for joining us.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
So do I.
It should be, be by a third quarter. So I'd like to make a motion to go on non-public on the 91A, 003, first.
Did Adam shut us down?
Adam, are you still there? I'm just gonna end the meeting, that's what I'm gonna do.
End meeting?
I don't know who's going.
End the meeting.
I don't know. He didn't, he didn't pipe in, right?
I'd use my cell phone to call, I'm not allowed to.
I'm not talking to you as we're trying to figure out.